I love your host.
Oh. Karen says that Karen, uh, Jerry is our sister's son. Time he's supposed to be.
Okay.
Karen says it should be here to go by Thursday.
Okay.
Probably got it from Sunday. He probably did get it from Sunday. Well.
Right.
What is today? You're around a lot of people on Thursday, right?
Yeah.
How long does it take to incubate? Well, times, I've heard like up to five. For Thursday. Right, it's Saturday, something.
Mm-hmm.
So it sounds really good.
Yeah.
It's gonna be like that now.
Yeah.
Forty-five years.
No, it should be okay.
I let my niece. Yeah. And this morning, I'm early in the gym and I didn't miss my auto start. And I was like, oh, you know, you need to get that car. And I'm driving. Yeah, it's gonna be my car to actually.
I let my daughter park the truck. I don't go, I don't go there. I leave, like, she will, she will get it.
I know, she took it well. So I need to get the picture down. I don't think she knew.
I like when I stay with mom.
She won't do it.
Grab my house, tie to have another.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking about.
Yeah, pack art, no.
I'm glad she took you.
Twenty-four percent.
She strikes me as the one who wouldn't choose. Had she known.
All right, good evening, everybody. It is Monday, November twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three. It is just after five-thirty PM. And this is a public meeting of the School Board of West Bend Joint School District Number One. More than twenty-four hours prior to the meeting, notice of the time, place, date, and subject matter of this meeting was posted at the entrance doors of the Education Service Center and at the West Bend Community Memorial Library. A copy was also sent to the Daily News, WIBD, Milwaukee Journal Sentinel, and other media sources that have requested notice of our meetings. I'll pause to ask Superintendent Wimmer to confirm if this meeting was properly posted.
Yes, it was.
Great, thank you. Please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, everyone, and welcome to the first Monday after the Thanksgiving holiday. First on our, I should say, next on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. The agenda was posted in advance. I should also note that we have a quorum of our board here present before we take their first vote. We have six of seven members present, and Kelly Lang has an excused absence, so we hope to see her next time. So, back to the approval of the agenda. It was posted in advance. I would move to approve this agenda. Is there a second? Thank you, Melanie. Motion and second to approve this agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye. Aye, any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. We have an approved agenda. Next, we've reserved time for public participation. I do not have any public participation comment cards, so I'll just pause to just make sure no one, if there's anyone here who wishes to participate. All right, seeing no one, we will move then to our consent agenda. And on our consent agenda, we have minutes of the November thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three regular meeting. We have, let's see here, no contracts and no resignations and, let's see, and one retirement to approve, as well as revenues and expenditures in the aggregate through October thirty-one of two thousand and twenty-three. Any questions on any item in the consent agenda? Hearing none, I would move to approve the consent agenda. Is there a second? Thank you, Chad. Motion and second to approve the consent agenda. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Thank you, that motion carries. That takes us to reports and our school presentations on elementary school. So I know we have a number of guest presenters. Superintendent Wimmer, I'm not sure if you're gonna kick this off, but we welcome our presenters to the podium.
I'll let them do introductions while they get there. Recall that we did early learning, kind of a combined to kick off our fall. Each school comes before the board two times. Elementary tonight is coming as a whole team to talk a little bit more about what elementary learning looks like and how they work through goals in their buildings, those kinds of things. So I'll just turn it over to them.
All right, thank you. Thanks for having us. We're excited to be able to share out our elementary school report to you guys as the board members and to our community. And I'll do a few little introductions before we begin. So I'm Darcy Van Adstein, I'm the principal at Jackson Elementary. I'm going on my fifth year there and tenth year within the district.
Oh, hey. Hi, Tristan Hayes, I'm at Fair Park. This is year seventeen in West Bend and year six as the principal of Fair Park.
I am Nathan Pollitz, the principal at Green Tree, and this is my first year at West Bend and my first year at Green Tree.
Andy Kasek, McLean Elementary School. This is my twenty-seventh year in the district and beginning my sixteenth year at McLean.
Adrian Schneider, principal at DeCorel Elementary, and this is my ninth year.
All right, thank you. And we're gonna kind of transition through different speakers as we go through our report. So collectively, as a K-four system, we serve nearly eighteen hundred students, K-four in our system, and we have sizes of schools that range from three hundred and twelve students in a building to three hundred and sixty-seven students in a building. Just to get some perspective on that. And what we're gonna share with you guys today is our strategic actions to move us forward. So really, we're here as an elementary team to speak to you in what learning looks like in each of our buildings, but collectively as a, as a whole system. And what our improvement plans are in the areas of student learning, as well as within this triangle, staff engagement and satisfaction, student belonging, and how we're being safe and secure. So each school definitely does have our own unique characteristics and action steps, but we wanted to share just collectively what we've been working on as a whole. So tonight, that's what our focus piece will be. And we're going to talk next about our foundational piece that supports our efforts of being efficient and effective when we talk about our collaborative teams at the schools. So I'm gonna hand it on over to Andy.
Thanks, Darcy. Yeah, so as Darcy said, the collective efficacy that we have in our buildings leads out in our, our PLCs. And as you can tell by the slide, we have four defining questions that we ask as we meet with our professional learning community teams. What do we want students to learn? How do we know if they learn it? How will we respond if the students don't learn it? And then how do we respond if the students already know the information? And that is, that theme that is intertwined through classrooms, through buildings, through the work that we do as, as a team, as an elementary team. And our staff work alongside each other in our teams, not only in their grade level teams, but vertically. Third talks to fourth grade, second talks to first grade. And so that is, that's how we try to ensure that, that we're continuously moving forward. And with our PLCs, just like any other job, they, they address those issues on a consistent basis. And we'll talk about it a little bit, but how do we use that data moving forward?
All right, along with our PLCs, we have our Building Leadership Team, which we call BLT. Those teams are organized throughout our school of what are different leaders at different grade levels. We try to have a broad representation of, of those leaders. And those, those groups of people and those teams meet together to look at our SIPs, specifically our school improvement plans, what we need to do to support our students to achieve those goals. Along with that, we also have our Student Services Team, which is made up of administration, psychologists, counselors, family liaison, and intermittently our interventionists. Those are all throughout our buildings. They go by different names in some buildings, but we call them our cares team just in general. We look at our students, what other supports they might need that fall outside of our academic purview, but still as things that we need to do to help support them to achieve academically within our buildings.
So as we move into the student, student learning aspect of it, we, the first question in the PLC, the Professional Learning Community, is what do we want students to learn? And those objectives are set by the district adopted standards and the curriculum. And this is, this is information that is on the website that families can access, that they know what their child is learning and what the expectation is for their child at the end of each grade level as they move through our system. And when the teachers are communicating with families throughout the school year, they will share, we have this unit coming up, here's how your child did. And that can be achieved through newsletters, through conferences, teachers, you know, parents reaching out through many ways, email, you know, set up conferences individually, however they are wanting to access that information. So other areas that we are working through this is making sure that we are continually looking at our resources to make sure that they're meeting the needs of our students. We want to be responding to the needs of our students as the years go by and as new things are coming up. So for example, with the new literacy law, that's going to be impacting our early grades, and we are currently in the process of looking at our current phonics instruction, our word study practice, and also our resources for alignment with those new requirements.
All right, and to go off of that with the curriculum and the standards, we do look at different assessments throughout the year. Aside from the classroom observations, the informal check-ins that the teachers do on a daily basis, we do have some standardized assessments that are up there as well, that we consistently look at and analyze to figure out what we can do to better support our students. I mentioned earlier our Building Leadership Teams. We do analyze a lot of this data from these assessments that you see up here. We look at that in our summer data summit and then also our mid-year data summit to see what we can do to help our students achieve and grow more.
Thanks, Nate. And as Adrian and Nate just kind of referenced, what do we do? How do we know if kids are getting it? How do we know if they're not getting it? The slide up here is demonstrating that because our students are engaged in the STAR assessment three times a year. So our kindergartners and first graders engage in the early literacy. Our second through fourth graders take the reading portion of that and the math as well. Kindergarten does not take the math because that is not offered in that STAR assessment. So, the slide that you are seeing, how will we know and how do we respond to that? So again, the assessments for grades first through fourth are, have identified a number of students who may need an academic intervention throughout the school year. And so with that being said, that could happen within the classroom, that could happen with, outside of the classroom, but that's all part of our processes. We work to be responsive to our students and focus on their continued growth throughout the school year. If they walk through the door in the fall already knowing something or not knowing something, teachers work to differentiate that instruction. And that is the, the hard work to ensure that all students are learning. If a student continues to struggle, they may participate in a structured intervention within the classroom or with one of our literacy or math specialists. And we're gonna be providing more detailed information about the performance data across the district and schools in a little bit.
Hey, board. I love that I get the picture with all the, the KOs on it. So this is the top of our pyramid, the student learning. So we, we talk about that as, as what we're doing here. That's our job. So this is our big focus to start. What the kids are taking away is really where we're focused. And the magic in that in school is how we're responsive to the learning that's happening. You know, looking at each kid where they are as an individual and using all of the skills and resources that we have to continue moving them. Sometimes, that learning looks like fun, but everything in schools has its purpose. So we're always flexible to meeting the needs of those kids. We use a lot of different terms. The gradual release is something that we talk a lot about when we're coaching teachers. That's the I do, we do, you do. So we introduce new terms, we walk them through, build that skills, build their, their feelings and confidence behind it and move through it. So then with that, we use a lot of intention in the teaching that we do. You hear a lot of things like conferring, and we've given practice and skills and how to have different conferences with students specific to their learning. Conferencing with students at their abilities in math, at their levels in reading, and really finding our ways to meet them where they are on an individual level, but still reaching all of our kids at once. And that's kind of the dance that elementary school teachers get to do, because there's a huge variety of space where our kids are in. So inside of this, we look for all of these ways to create these opportunities. And as you've heard from my colleagues, that requires a lot of work together, a lot of collaboration, a lot of meeting, a lot of pouring through data to really make it meaningful. The more that we can collect, the more that we can look it through, find trends, find ways to interrupt, and maybe find new ways to reach where they are. That's the keys that we're looking for, and that, that happens through a variety of different ways. Our biggest lever that we're pulling is our PLCs, and that's a district-wide space. We've gotten district-level coaching for administration. We've brought other amazing people on our teams that we're all together, all pulling on the same end of the rope. So we've made a shift a little bit away from like leveling kids to really focusing on what skills they're learning. And that's been a, a really cool shift, to be able to really look at kind of the things inside of the levels and make sure we're moving kids. You'll see lots of graphs and data when it talks about, but we, we see inside of that graph, inside of those bands, each of those are filled with little humans to us. And the things that we can do, those moments in between, the conversations, the extra teaching and the collaboration, that's really where we're focused. Lastly, we're really finding ways to better leverage our digital tools because we have that as our last step. They assist us in that progress monitoring. Every single thing that they do inside of those helps build a more rich and profound view of where the kids are and how it can help us from what we may have missed. Again, constant progress monitoring. Thank you.
All right, a next layer of that whole picture in our triangle is engagement and satisfaction, and that's really from the staff level. So the results that you see up there are from last year. That was the result of a couple of different surveys that we did in February and again in May. Or not and again, but two different surveys, one administered in February and one, I believe, in May. And these are the K-four results of a couple of those data pieces. These are all increases from the previous year. And the cool thing about this data is that it's data that we have received over multiple years. And so we're really able to use this data to look over time to see how we've grown in areas that we really need to be targeting more. So a couple of things that I just wanted to pull out from that to share with you, specifically the quality of feedback. What that is related to is the evaluation process. So the results show that eighty-six point two percent of K-four staff indicate that the feedback that they receive from their evaluator about their teaching is useful and accurate. So some of the areas that were surveyed include that the observation or the walkthrough that informed the feedback represented a typical day in the classroom. So we don't want it to be a, a gotcha moment or, oh, man, you came in the day before Christmas break, are you kidding me? That kind of stuff. It represented a typical day in the classroom. And another one was in our system, if different evaluators would likely give the same rating. So if I went into McLean, would it, would my observation of a classroom look similar to Mr. Kasek? Or if Mr. Hayes would come into my building, would that look similar? So that, that's a really positive result to look at just in our calibration of what we're expecting of our, of our educators. Another component to that survey is that recommendations are being given for, for professional development, both in the areas of instructional and behavioral strategies. So the teachers that are responding in this survey are giving the feedback around those areas. So that's an area that we're seeing an increase in the survey results year after year. So we are always looking for room to grow with that also. So we pull that apart at the site level on each of these to see where are some areas that we can continue to target and grow. That next one is direct supervisor statements are aligned to actions. So here, we really wanna make sure that what we say we're going to do is what we are going to do. And if it's something that we are unable to do for a variety of reasons, we just wanna make sure that we communicate about that or we communicate the status of where we're at, whether it's about just an update or about the request or the concern, so that it just doesn't seem like a get lost in the shuffle. We wanna make sure that our staff feel that their, their priority or their concern was validated and responded to accordingly. As I shared, all of those scores are an increase from the previous year. And, and then at each site level as part of our school improvement plan, we each have specific areas that we are working to grow. And then within our Building Leadership Team, we are designing act, action steps to increase what those scores will look like for our sites.
All right, and with, with those leadership teams, we're really looking to build a positive culture with our staff. We know that a positive staff is gonna lead to better outcomes. So some of the, some of the phrases that we have up here are all common themes that we've used throughout the year. So we started out the year in August in our BLT Summer Summit. And one of the things that we talked about right away is as a group from all the elementary schools, we had all the teams together, and we emphasized that these are the elite staff members of the elite, that we are expecting a little bit more from them, and we are expecting them to help support each other and also support their own, their own staff during this process throughout the school year. So we really focused on that. We're trying to build that collaborative leadership throughout each grade level to help support everyone and propel us all forward. We also have a common theme of owning the boat. And that's looking at our data and not hiding from it, but owning it. And also knowing that we need to work together as a team, we need to be positive, and we need to work together in unison. So one of the metaphors that we use is rowing the boat in unison with each other. If you are on a crew team and everyone, one person's rowing at a different pace than the other person, everyone's gonna go in all types of different directions and you're not gonna get to your goal. If everyone's rowing together in unison, you're gonna go in the same direction quicker and faster. And that's kind of why we've used some of those themes to help build that staff capacity. It's obviously all directed towards our vision and purpose of helping students achieve and grow as much as possible. And the biggest thing that we've, we've really focused on beyond those summits is really celebrating our wins. We really want to emphasize the positives. We wanna emphasize the great work that our staff members are doing within the building. And that's, that's something that we are gonna continue to do throughout the school year.
All right, before I move on to student belonging, I just wanna emphasize the great work that the district and each site has been doing on staff wellness, this health, like the healthy lifestyles and just developing their sense of belonging too. So as a, as a district, each site has their own representative that's on that team. And so they create either site wellness challenges amongst the schools or a movie night that's coming up that staff and families can go to, so they're bringing kind of that sense of belonging, not just a staff member, but your family too into this team. And some other site examples, we have site pickleball that's going on, and this is all built within the capacity of our sites. The wellness teams there are creating these opportunities to connect with one another, where it's like a craft and small business fair that a couple of schools are doing, or book clubs, or, or walks on, on Wednesdays or lunches. A lot of them are doing healthy lunches or dips and chips and stuff. So anyway, that staff can feel connected and can work with one another, and we're focusing on their health and wellbeing. We know that in order to take, take care of others, you have to take care of ourselves. So I love that our district has been putting an emphasis on that and has been really helped build the capacity amongst all of our schools to be able to do that and support that. And moving on to safe and secure is around our students and their sense of belonging. And we know that is huge. In order for students to feel like they belong, they need to feel connected to a peer. They need to feel connected to an adult in the building. They need to feel that they have people there cheering for them. So as a K-four system, another strategic action we have is that we are making sure that we have our welcoming routines. People love to hear their name, whether they like it or not. They like, there's something that just sparks when you welcome students by name, so that's an emphasis that we do across our schools. Or even when we have our K-four student connection survey, so our schools, our, our schools still do that. All of our K-four students take a survey on various different questions, and one of them has to deal, a couple of the questions have to speak to. Do you have a friend that you can go to? Do you have an adult that you can go to? And as we look through that data, if we see that there are some gaps in that, then we create mentoring opportunities, whether it's adults with, with our kids or, or being mentors or older adults with kids. We'll, we'll pair up like book buddies, where we have younger classes meet with older classmates. So just being able to stay connected and feeling welcome. So those strong welcoming routines, building that sense of belonging with student-to-student shout-outs. So each classroom's supposed to develop their own student-to-student shout-out system within their classroom to kind of build that sense of belonging to, as well as student incentives. So each of our schools has a system, whether it's the Falcon feathers or the JJ tickets or the bug slips. They're doing those, they're earning those for leading and showing out the WBSC way. So they're being safe, respectful, responsible, or ready to learn. And either their peers or staff have noticed that, they've recognized from, from that, and then we're creating incentives out of that to keep that energy going. So then we have lots of either incentives, either quarterly or monthly or in your classroom incentives to kind of keep that engagement high and going. And we also have at our schools different student leadership opportunities. Some schools call it the character crew, or where they're leading out different opportunities within the school. Maybe it's like community service, or maybe it's within the school as little mini crossing guards. Or however it is, we're creating opportunities for students to be service leaders as well. So that's as a K-four system. And then as you feel like you belong somewhere, you're feeling safe. You feel like you, you're safe there. And we also intentionally practice safety, where each of our schools does do a safety week. Sometimes it's twice a year with a week long or just different safety drills within that, just to develop that, that muscle memory in case we need to use it, we know what to do. And also developing those lessons within our counseling and our, and our classroom teachers just around emotional management, how to be friends, those different kind of things, how to be inclusive with one another. So our, all of our staff members are really intentionally working hard on that student sense of belonging, and so are our students. We should give them credit for that too, because they're really working hard on how to make sure we include one another.
All right. All right, we're getting there, guys. So on the safe and secure, we have also the aspect that this is where we put our student behavior data. So I wanna start with those two giant blue charts. Those, that's a running tally. September, we didn't include on here because it's that first month, we're getting into routines. And it walks through the October and November first data that's been pulled. So what we have here is the percentage of students who have received a major behavior referral. And I think what, I, I wanna start by saying, that's nearly a hundred percent. We're at ninety-nine point five percent of our students are receiving zero. And that zero to one, we're talking about that infinitesimally small group. And it's really important to start with that, but there are kids that, that need correction. There is a huge part of our job about finding what we, we see that's, that's behavior that isn't matching our expectations and students that are outside of that, and how do we respond? So inside of our schools, we spend a lot of time on that, but it's about that corrective behavior. We always talk about replacement behaviors. If there's a behavior that's happening, we have to also say, okay, not just fix it, but here's what we need to do instead. Let's practice, let's role play, let's set out a list, let's work through it together, let's bring other people in, let's have our families be part of these discussions, because that's where change happens. So we really focus on this reflective feeling, what happened in that instant, who else was involved? How did that affect the other people? And if we don't start with that as a foundation, what we, what we find is it's just a repeated behavior, and we wonder how we get stuck in these cycles. And to break that, it has to be reflective from the student and all of the other people involved. And we find, the more that we can prepare our staff to have those, we have starter cards that have the restorative questions inside, who was involved, what happened, what are we gonna do next? How did, how did you feel while that was happening? What was the antecedent to this behavior? What started things? And the more that that becomes muscle memory for the adults, instead of just, you were in the wrong, this is your consequence and moving on, we're able to interrupt some of these behaviors in, in much more reflective, problem-solving-based ways. On the bottom, you're gonna see optimistic closure. We know we started our day, we want them to feel welcome when they come in. And if, if a kid has been a rough day and they, they got in trouble and these things, we also need to have that same feeling, tomorrow is a brand-new day. You're still a really important member of our families, and you need to be back and you need to be part of our, our building. If we don't build that in to our behavior reflections, we're missing a real opportunity, again, to break that cycle of a student not feeling connected. If we wanna ensure that we're gonna have behavior problems, we set them up. But we do everything we can, optimistic closure. Tomorrow's a new day, we fixed this problem, we've reflected, we've given replacement behaviors, and now we're ready to go forward. We do a lot of work inside of our schools. We've talked about building those communities. We've talked about putting together really meaningful teams to make sure kids know that they're cared for, to make sure that they're heard. they're cared for, to make sure that they're heard. But then we also have to be super intentional about responding to the behaviors that are happening in a really reflective, problem-solving way. So the optimistic closure gets us there. That being said, we do know that there are students that have problems. We calibrate, okay? So what am I doing versus what are my peers doing to respond to this specific behavior? And it's not just you get lost in your own world. It's awesome to have a team. And this presentation with all of us here is really true to that. If I have a question, I have four friends that I can call immediately to say, hey, this is what I have, help me see this from a broader perspective. Help me remove this from this instant and let me see it in a better lens. And we have those conversations too. We track our data, and we're able to bring that to our partners at central office. We're able to calibrate back in, again, more meaningful, direct ways. And again, all of that is so that our responses can be as appropriate, direct, and calibrated as possible. Because it's our response to behaviors that matters. The behaviors are going to happen, no matter where you're at, you're going to find problems, behaviors that aren't less desirable. But it's what do we do when they happen that sets us up in our best way to fix them in a way that everyone can be included and safe and free from those things. The last on there, there's a little circle on there, and you'll see that in some of our buildings. I just wanted to point out that all of our buildings have been recognized by the Wisconsin Response to Intervention Center. And we've earned silver awards around the area of behavior and the way that we track it and the way that we respond to it. And it's something of a celebration, I think, that we're really proud of because it's been intentional, because we do it purposefully. So with that, we've come to our last slide, which asks, what questions do you have for us?
First, thank you for your presentation. I'll ask the board members, any questions for the team? John, go ahead.
I guess I just had, I was just interested in hearing more about, hold on, getting to the names. I can't pronounce your last name. You talked about the, you guys have an elite group of teachers that you guys have together. And can you just speak a little bit more about that, how you guys came up with those, that group of teachers? You know, how do they differentiate from other teachers? You know, what you guys are looking for in that?
Yeah, so what we first start off with is we want to make sure we have all different types of teacher groups represented in our leadership teams. So it doesn't just include grade-level teachers. We're also talking about support staff. We do have some aides that are in our BLTs as well, as well as special ed. So we try to get a broad range of teachers. Some of these teachers have just kind of stuck out as being more natural leaders. When you have grade-level meetings and grade-level teams, you can kind of pick those out where someone is kind of spearheading different initiatives. Typically, we ask or request those people to be on the teams. It is a lot. They do meet outside of the school hours in the summer, special times during the school year to go through. So it's really taking a holistic approach. We do have people that will request from time to time, and we'll adjust and juggle things as we see fit, depending on what needs may come up. But we really take a large-scale approach to looking at who our natural leaders are in the building and who we want to help build that capacity to lead in the future.
And the term, John, if I may, I think the term, the lead of the lead means it's people who have set themselves up, who have, most of the time, our leadership teams are volunteer. It's people who are stepping up. And I think from all of us in a leadership role, when someone wants to give extra, wants to be support, wants to be part of a solution, that's something that I think we all need to recognize and say, we appreciate what you're doing. It's very much not me saying, you, you got to be on this team. It's people who step up naturally and fill into that role. Of my leadership at Fair Park, none of them were selected by me. The teams talk, they work it out very naturally and organically, and they become part of the leadership team. Sometimes schools go on cycles, and they serve for a certain amount of time. But I think, I don't want you to read into like anyone's giving them a gold star. This was more of them saying, I want to give and be part of the leadership of my building and my district.
Yeah, and I think, I mean, I think that's, you know, going to produce better results anyways, when somebody actually wants to be a part of that team. So I think that's a good, you know, that's a good thing that you guys aren't assigning them to them, to the position. But are we collaborating? You know, I'm assuming we have different teams at each school. Are they coming together as a whole and talking also?
Yeah, we came together this summer. And that's where we brought the lead of the lead together. And we really emphasize this of what our expectation of them is and how we expect them to lead at different points of the year and really take ownership of our school improvement plan. Because it's not just something that's on a piece of paper. It's not just something that I came up with or Tristan came up with. It's something that we own together and that we're working towards collaboratively to support that and implement it appropriately.
And how often are they still meeting?
So our teams meet at various times throughout the year. My team has been meeting about every other week. If there is a bigger pressing issue, we'll meet weekly to go through that. But I'd say on average, it's about every other week.
Thank you. Other questions? All right. Other questions? Well, actually, you know what? I do have one, and it's about data. Sorry. And I ask this question each time because, for the life of me, I cannot remember how to read these graphs. But if you go back to, I think it's Slide 6, so the student learning. You know, we have bar graphs. So for instance, if a bar graph shows it's at the 60% line, what does that mean? Meaning, for instance, is it, well, 60% of people can read and 60% can't? I mean, what does that line mean generally? I just want to be sure that.
So in this particular graph, and I can confirm, we poll, data can say whatever you need it to say, and I'll recognize that, Chris. This graph is recognizing levels that are at the proficiency level. So they have met proficiency. And so we always use that as our goal. We know that we need them to be here. And we achieve that, or we aspire to have all students learning at high levels. So we always try to use the proficiency level, not the median level, but proficiency. So that's what this graph measures. And when you look across it, I always look for that growth. We want to be growing people into that next category. So from where they are up into that proficiency.
Great. No, that's helpful. I think likely we're going to be talking about it in a future agenda item here. But as it relates to proficiency, I just want to be sure that we're not misinterpreting the graph to say, this is a pass/fail kind of thing. And that's not it. This is who's achieved the higher levels, but there are others who have achieved a decent level perhaps and are not, I'm not using correct words.
No, you're right on. And we break it up, we have the way to break it up into three categories or six categories or depending on how granular you want to go. But I think as far, for these purposes, proficiency is what we're aspiring for. The report card gives us more points for it. Like, again, you can get more nuanced into how they break those out, but.
No, it's helpful, and I appreciate too. I know in past graphs, we'd like to look for progression because it's in the early part of the year, the middle part of the year, the later part of the year. So you'd like to see those go up. And then the next year, it starts slow, I'm guessing, because now they've advanced a grade and the curriculum's more challenging.
That bar moves up.
And you start over again. Okay. Thank you for that refresher. I appreciate that.
Yeah, thanks.
Other questions?
I just have a.
Go right ahead.
A comment and maybe a question for our presentation two from now. Just a statement about report cards. I was at Jackson, saw the excitement of a meeting that all the elementary schools exceeded expectations on their report card, which is outstanding. And I think it's outstanding, if you go into their buildings, you see the energy in the buildings from the teacher's standpoint and the student's standpoint, from the parents and students going into the building. So it's great. Thank you for providing the leadership on that energy, and thank you for having the report cards. All our elementary schools exceed expectations. Badger, and there's another question that we'll get to maybe when Christina presents her findings on report cards. How can we exceed at that level? Are they doing a different test at Badger or something that says meets few expectations, at least on a testing level? I know these are star testing levels. I don't know if there's a different test level at Badger School. But I'll get back to my point. But thank you for providing the energy at the elementary school, and the performance speaks for itself. And I think the grades on teacher satisfaction and even student satisfaction is there, and just encourage you to do more.
Great. Last call. All right. Thank you so much for coming and presenting. Appreciate it very much. Thank you. Reports. Oh, so we are on, next is the Curriculum Committee Report, and Melanie Ergot, our Curriculum Committee Chair, will give us that update. Melanie?
All right. So the Curriculum Committee met November 21st. We heard two presentations on some comprehensive plans for reading and math in the district for this year. The Plan for Reading is in part mandated by law. The law is Act 20 and encompasses literacy education from kindergarten through third grade. There are key components that must be met, and the district has developed a plan to meet the law. There are clear goals and teams that are engaged to carry out the work. An assessment of our current curriculum and instructional practices has been completed, and the committee anticipates reviewing primary resources per policy in the months to come this year and making recommendations for the full board's approval or consideration for approval. And at the same time, a program evaluation will be conducted for the Grades 10 through 12 ELA program to make sure that the shifts align with the shifts at the elementary level. And then the Plan for Math focuses on three areas to increase student achievement for students primarily in fifth through 12th grades, because the work at the elementary level is dedicated to reading right now. The first area involves making professional learning communities more strategic. The second area utilizes instructional coaching for our teachers from professional development partners CISA 6 and the Math Institute of Wisconsin. And the third part is specific to daily reteaching practices. So that is, those are the two items we discussed.
Very good. Any questions for Melanie? Thank you to the Curriculum Committee for your work. Appreciate that. Next on our agenda is the 2023 School Accountability Report. Tina Van Rue is on her way up to the podium.
I'll join her.
Dr. Quinn Truett, thank you.
We're just really happy to be here together, actually, because Tina said I've never had a partner. I said, well, good thing you picked me. So it's actually a joy for us to be here with you together. And this is my first time, so it's actually my pleasure to follow Tina after she describes the nuances and the details of the report card that I would follow suit with, what are we going to do about it? So take it away, Tina.
All right. I'll scooch. How about we. Thanks. All right, so thank you for having me. As you know, each year, DPI produces report cards for every district and school in the state. They collect tons of data and calculate it to make these scores. When the data is collected, it is categorized into four different areas as pictured by the pie chart on the slide that you're seeing. We'll go through today the results on how we did in the areas of achievement, growth, target groups, and how we are doing with being on track to graduation. Once those four areas are scored, they all come together to create an overall score that is aligned to a star rating. As a district, we received three stars this year with a score of 68.8. While all the scores behind it are different, this is the exact same overall score and star rating that we had the prior year. So it just goes to show how all the different calculations can warrant an overall result that's the same. DPI did release a press release the day that this went public, and you can see that we, meeting expectations, are included in 94% of the districts that met, exceeded, or significantly exceeded expectations. The first area that we'll break down on the report card is the area of achievement. Achievement is really measuring how students are doing on grade level when they take the state assessments. So Kurt, you had mentioned, we saw star results when the elementary was presenting. When we look at these report cards, we're looking at the state assessments such as the Wisconsin Forward Exam, the pre-ACT Secure, the ACT, as well as an alternate assessment called the DLM. The students in Grades 3 through 11 are assessed every spring, and the results of those assessments are used to create this achievement score. In this area of achievement, they use three years of data. And then last year's data, since it's the most recent, is weighed more heavily. While the historical data is still included, it just doesn't carry as much weight for the overall score. The picture on the upper right shows our score in this area. So for achievement, we got a 69.7. For English Language Arts and Math, you can see our district's score is in the dark blue bar, and a comparison on how the other K-12 schools did, or sorry, districts did in the state is in the gray bar. In both of these areas, our scores exceeded the state performance. On the picture of the bottom, they will tell us on their report cards how we ranked in the area of achievement. So our district's score was the same or higher than 80.5% of other districts in the state. Looking at that vertical bar graph, you can, if you picture it almost like a bell curve, we fell where the majority of districts fell and kind of towards the top of that bar. So we're in the top 20% in the state in the area of achievement. The next area on the report card is growth. Growth is a different measurement. Growth is not how you're doing at grade level like achievement, but how did you grow year to year? So the students included in this growth measure start at Grade 4 and continue through Grade 11. So our third grader's performance is not included in here because that's the first time they test, and we don't know how they grew because they only had one assessment. Also, in this area, the same state assessments are used, but more historical years are calculated. They could use four to five years of data in this area. Likewise, the alternate assessment, the DLM, which is taken by a very small percentage of our students who are educated on different standards, are not included in this growth area. Those individuals grow at a unique pace and style, so they're not included in this measurement. The picture on the upper right, you can see that our growth score was a 63.2. Again, you can see how our district performed in English Language Arts and Math compared to the state. In ELA, our growth performance was below the state average, and math was right at the state average. The picture on the bottom that shows our ranking in the area of growth, we were the same or higher than 45.3%. Again, looking at that vertical bar, we fall where the majority fell in that bar graph with scores. However, we'd be closer to the bottom of that bar graph. The next area of the report card is on track to graduation. The state has identified a couple different indicators that are indicators for future success. In this area, they look at attendance, graduation, if it's available, as well as third-grade English Language Arts and eighth-grade math. If students are performing well in these four different areas, they are likely to be more successful post-graduation. They would consider these to be milestones. In all of the areas, absenteeism, graduation, third-grade ELA, and eighth-grade math, all of our scores are above the state average. For our ranking, on track to graduation, we were the same or higher than 72.4%. Again, falling where the majority of the districts did, but towards the top of that The last of the priority areas is called Target Group Outcomes. This area is pretty unique. This is really taking examination at our lowest performers and creating a mini report card within the report card for the students that have the greatest needs. So once those students are identified based off of their test scores, or their attendance, or their graduation, they examine them in all of those areas to see how they're doing. This is an area of need. It pretty much replaces on the old report cards, closing the gaps. So when you have students of greatest need, you want to close that gap. You want to build their skills in academics. You want them to attend more. You want them to be graduating on time. So this area helps identify the students of greatest need and what that greatest need is, so we can help be responsive to them and close that gap. Our overall score for Target Group Outcomes was 54.5. You can see that there is no state comparison in the four different areas because each target group is unique to each district. Some districts don't even have this area. And then our ranking for this was 28.5. So it definitely helps shine a flashlight on the students that need us most and how we can support them. we can support them in the future. Also in the report card, near the back, you will see that there is some information shared on post-secondary preparation. This information is collected from Skyward and it's only here to show information. It does not affect our scores, our star ratings, or anything. But it does give us an opportunity to say how we're doing in the offerings that we have available for our students. For post-secondary preparation, the information displayed is legged, so it is from the 21-22 school year. You'll see our district's percentages compared to the state in four different areas, including advanced courses such as AP, dual enrollment, which means it's a course that they take in partnership with a college or university such as Marine Park, industry-recognized credentials. An example would be like getting your SERV safe credential through like the Culinary Arts Program. And then lastly, work-based learning, which could be an example of like a youth apprenticeship. Another page for information is in relation to our arts courses. Similarly, you can see how our students are participating in our district compared to state. The categories for this are art and design, dance, music, and theater. And then students that are represented here have completed at least one course in this area. But oftentimes, you know that students that are passionate about art or theater take as many courses as they can in that, but they're only counted once within these percentages. Before we transition to talk about the schools, which I know you're probably excited to hear about that, I wanted to revisit the priority areas. We went through all four: achievement, growth, target group outcomes, and on track to graduation. But I want to preface how those four areas all come with different weights in creating the overall score. The top two areas, achievement and growth, work kind of hand in hand to make up 50% of that overall score. And what makes those two scores teeter totter with one another is the percentage of students at the school or district that are economically disadvantaged. You can see that if, like our district has, last year, 33.1% of our students were economically disadvantaged, that triggers the achievement score to weigh more than the growth score in the overall calculation. When you look at all of the schools, you can see that every single pie chart is unique. Even in our own district, we don't have two schools that have the exact same weighted calculations. So for that, with caution, I know it's very tempting to look at one school's overall score and compare apples to apples, but they're not totally apples to apples when you look at the overall scores due to how each of these areas are weighted. But with that being said, we do want to talk about each of the schools' results and it just makes sense to put it all on one slide together. So I know you guys have already seen these. We're very excited by a lot of the results that we got and also very grateful for the board members that were able to come and help celebrate the staff the day that the public release was issued. So thank you for your time and for being part of that. I know it went over very well and it was a great way to start and end the day for a lot of staff. As mentioned previously, all of our elementary schools at minimum got four stars, which is an exceeds expectations. However, Green Tree was able to achieve five stars, significantly exceeds. Silverbrook Intermediate also received four stars. Badger Middle received two, and then each of the high schools received three. Each of the overall scores is provided for each school, but we'd like to spend a little time highlighting something from each, which you should be familiar with because it's similar highlights to what we were able to do with the staff on the day of the release. For our elementary schools, Decorah, Fair Park, and Green Tree all had really great scores in the area of growth, specifically math. And again, growth at the elementary is really looking at that fourth graders. How did our students grow from third to fourth grade? So those fourth grade teams were really doing the work and getting really great results in these areas, in the area of math growth. For Jackson and McLean, both of them had highlights in the area of achievement. So third and fourth graders, year after year, performing highly on their grade level expectations. Jackson had a score of 90.5 on their math achievement while McLean's rank compared to all other K-5 schools has been over 90% for three years in a row. So McLean's achievement is in the top 10% of all other K-5 schools in the state. Silverbrook was another school who showed really great results in the area of growth. Their score, as well as their state ranking, has increased for three consecutive years. So we're seeing a really great upward trend for them. For Badger, although their overall score doesn't show out all the good that's happening there, they did have their ELA and math achievement scores continue to be above the state. And that is not typical for all middle schools. So the fact that they're still receiving that grade level achievement is something that should be recognized. For our high schools, upward trending, which is great, heading in the right direction. Ranking and some actions that are in place to help us continuously improve.
Thank you, Tina. And Tina is extraordinary in her care of the data and how she presents it. So you can see her work here. So I wanted to thank you very much, Tina, for your years of service in this area. So it shows, thank you. So I'm a competitive person by nature, so I know that numbers mean things to people. But we have to care about the numbers because in my eyes, the competition is not really about winning, losing. The competition is really about the students that we serve. And each student is somewhere in our numbers. And that's where we as a district need, that's where we're moving. And that's what you've heard all of the principals talk about. But I think it's time to really look at this data and really say, okay, we've had enough of looking at it. What are we going to do about it? So I'd like to finish out this presentation with a summary of the things that I think are critical to moving our district forward and most importantly, to moving one to 6,000 students to achieve higher than they were the prior year significantly. So I'd like to share with you the comparables here. I think in October of last year, you were also presented with a assessment data and these were the three comparable categories in which you were provided. So we have Washington County. And you can see here that if we compare our school report card scores, the district score, excuse me, you'll also see the translation in the star rating, we are sixth out of eighth in our rank in our county. I personally know that there's ways in which we can move that up into, right there, it's about 40% or something, 43%. I think, I think we can move it up to 20% more and keep moving it up because there are ways, I know professionally, that this, the talent at this district, the systems we have in place, we absolutely can do that. And so it's important to know where we are so we can move it. Demographically, here we are. We are fourth out of sixth in terms of our report card score. And lastly, in spending, I think this is the one that hurts a little bit more for me because we are, we have, we're spending money and we need to get the results for it. And I'm absolutely confident that with the administration, with the leadership teams we have in place, with the resources that we have available and the direction that we're moving in, that you'll hear in a little bit as the curriculum committee, as Ms. Arigot has summarized a little bit, how we can make our spending more valuable and actually change the outcomes. So that's where we're heading. So with what Tina has presented, which was lots of information, and I think it is, I looked at the detailed page from the DPI's calculator, and it is a manual on how these report cards are actually formulated. It is actually more than what a very talented actuaries could actually digest to. So these are very complicated measures for the specific intent of helping our schools know where we are and what we can do about it. So our focus right now will be looking at that third grade language arts, as you see in the maroon box there, and also looking very specifically at the eighth grade mathematics So just to get a reference check on what our trend data is, you can see here that from the very beginning of the DPI report cards, and it has morphed over time. The formula has changed over time, but the purpose has not. So starting in 2015, I'll track, I'll, oh, sorry, that is the, sorry, Wisconsin Forward. Thank you, because there was a changeover on the assessment. For third grade ELA proficiency, and Mr. Zweiger, you had asked about what do we really measure? Here it is again. We actually measure how many students meet benchmark proficiency levels, whether advanced or proficient. So here we are in West Bend with the maroon line. We also have the state line. And more importantly for me, if we look future view, that dash line, which is gray, is the line that I'm looking at. And that's the 80% goal that we need to keep our eye on. And whatever we're doing as a system should be getting us closer to that gray dash line, which is that 80% proficiency. I will talk about that a little bit more when we get to another level of it. But if I track all of this, it's that line that we're looking at. And I'm hoping that that gray line actually meets us somewhere very, in several years, but we're going to get there. What I would like you to see is the trend is, the slope is down. And there are lots of reasons to explain that, but probably at this point, we can dissect it all we want. But I think the moment we have right now is to understand where we're at and look at the accountability report cards and also see that there's a declining trend here and that there are ways in which we have to address it in a very focused manner. So what would those ways be? One of our very targeted strategic actions is to look at English Language Arts proficiency, and there will be an entire district approach to it. As you know, and as you've heard in different forums, that we do have early literacy and we do have the importance of the law that we are following under. But that's really not the greatest motivator we have. What we have is, we have to learn how to teach reading at the very earliest level. And so we are actually mobilized to do that with a very specific plan. That plan involves science-based instruction that is very explicitly designed so that it can be addressing both the classroom, which is, we call it universal level, and also what happens when the students aren't able to learn it in that setting. We have an intervention setting that we also have to be sure that we are extremely instrumented to execute. Also, we have Science of Reading Curriculum, which I know Ms. Arigot and the curriculum committee has been hearing much more about. And that really will be the, one of the key levers that we're exploring to match what we need with the staff that we have under the DPI's approval. And we also have the dedicated teams that are fully formed right now. They're in gear and they are going as fast as they can, and they can only go as fast as the state actually allows because there are strict timelines that get us through this year. And lastly, we do have a very clear plan for professional development with our literacy specialists, who have been really the anchor leaders, and also our principals who are sitting here, who are, if not rowing the boat with them, I can tell you right now that the core team, everybody is understanding how to row together, using your metaphor. So thank you. When we look at Silverbrook, Bradger, and High School, we call that secondary for the most part. The only way we can really understand how to do it better is to really undergo the enormous task, and it's a significant one if we want to do it right, is to go through a program analysis. And what that furnishes is, it allows us to assess what we have, to really get information from the people who do the work, and also create focus areas, create a collaborative plan, a strategic plan, and then also implement it, action it, and also monitor and adjust to that. That is the only way a system like ours can actually do the work very well. And so we are actually launching that this month already to message out, ask for collaborative team members to engage in this. And the more participants we have, the better our analysis will be. So that's an all-call. And lastly, there are many, many people in our system who are not ELA teachers, but they are in enormous support position because reading and math are in every classroom all the time in every discipline. So what we will, are doing is, we're actually going back to the basics, and this is going round and round in many education systems, but we really want to look at what our curriculum maps are, look like, who is actually doing them, and also what are the units of study that tell everybody what you're teaching, when you're teaching it, how you're teaching it, and how, how are you testing it? Those are the key elements of what a good unit study allows everybody to know in the industry and also for the public. And lastly, instructional practice, that is always something that you might think is going on every day, but it is not a static discipline. It's very dynamic. And so we're going to have to brush up on what are the best practices again. We have to re-ground ourselves on what do we know in this current day about the, the way the world is to a young person in a school because the environment has changed and so have their brains. So instructional practices also have to really be quite aligned to those shifts. I'd like to switch gears to the, the other focus area, which is eighth grade math. And similar trend display here. Again, you can see that for the Forward Exam, about 43% on average, I would say, up or down of our students in the district are proficient. And it is above the state average, but I don't always like measuring ourselves against the state average as much as I like the gray line, which is 80%. So you can also see the report card accountability trend is holding steady. And Tina really did explain some of the nuances there, but we are allowing ourselves to look at this and say, okay, what do we, what can we do right now? What's the plan forward as we look at this data? So we have a comprehensive approach. And you heard quite a lot about PLCs, which is our industry practice of professional learning communities. And it is actually a very strict practice. And that practice, as you heard, I'm just going to use different terms for maybe a different catch here. This is how we work through information, diagnosis, solution finding, and also outcomes-driven. Those are the four things that really happen in a professional learning community process. I do believe, as I've stepped into this position, this district has committed enormous amounts of learning and time and energy to bolstering how people conduct professional learning community processes in the district. And I believe that, that productive nature of learning about that and doing it and practicing it and getting better at it is actually showing trends up. We just cannot measure it with these data sets right now, but we can measure it with other internal data. So I'm really happy to see that that's going to keep going and it's productive. Secondly, we have instructional coaching. You know, the best way to actually help people do their job better is to get people to help them do it. And it's actually on the floor, having discussions, showing techniques, modeling, and collaborating. And lastly, daily reteaching is something that, you know, that's that one question on the PLC model that you were introduced to, was what do we do when students don't learn what we presented to them in that moment? Daily reteaching is actually one of those very, very high-skilled tasks that our professionals execute every day, and we just want them to be much better at it more consistently, and we're going to help them do it. And I think they will be quite successful with that support. We also have, as you know, the professional development partners, and every single person, every single teacher will get three individualized coaching sessions this year alone, which is actually very rigorous. It's a robust schedule and also regular collaboration with the Math Institute, which is by far the most effective partner that you have in the state for math. which is by far the most effective partner that you have in the state for math education. So I'm really pleased that this is who we're working with. Okay, oops, I went so fast on that. We also, I'll, I'll wrap it up a little bit with some additional resources that Tina has provided. But I certainly, we would welcome your questions at this point.
Great, we'll open up for questions. Would you like to start, Chad?
I just have some foundational questions on looking through the data. If you can go back to the target group outcomes slide, you had mentioned that this is unique to each district and that some districts actually don't even have this measure. What, is there a threshold that you have to reach, like a certain number of students who meet this criteria in order for you to qualify for this category?
Yeah, so the target group outcomes comes with a student cell size. So there has to be at least 20 students in the district. And those students in that school have to have at least three years of data in order to calculate some of these outcomes. For the past two report cards, our elementary schools didn't even have this category. This is the first year that our elementary schools have all four areas that are calculating because of those data rules for that historical information. So it is.
What is our district cell size? Like, how many students do we have that fall into this criteria? What percentage of our students?
So once you have enough students to fall in here, they examine and create this mini report card for students that are in the bottom quartile.
Okay, so any, so any student in the bottom quartile meets this criteria? And then that's who gets weighted in this 25% of our overall score?
Yes, so it's our bottom quartile for achievement, which would be third through 11th graders. Our bottom quartile for growth, which would be our fourth through 11th graders. And then for attendance and graduation, any applicable grades that are, have collected data.
So for districts who don't have this, where does the other weight in the cat, do all the other, is, does that 25% just get split up amongst other categories?
Yes, yeah.
So just to be clear, and the reason I ask what number or percent of students is, because when I look at our overall score, this is presumably a small percentage of our students overall who qualify us for this category, if you will. And obviously, it's the students who need the most help, so it's an important marker. But I think it's important to note that, you know, 25% of our overall report card score was, was weighted with this 54.5 marker at 25% weight, which is a huge, you know, I mean, that's a, that's a huge drop, a huge weight on, on the score overall. So I, I do think that's important to point out. And that's why I wanted to clarify to myself also just what percentage of our students it is that are participating in that. The other thing I had.
Another point, if I could, before you move on.
Oh, yeah, please.
As Quinn said, kind of in the manual, all the calculations behind the scene, in this target group outcome, there's four different areas listed. Within that, growth is 50% of this one. So it's not like it's achievement at 25, growth at 25, absenteeism at 25. There's an extra weight on growth within this. So if you are a school who is excelling at growth versus a school who's really struggling with that growth, it's almost like a, a double weight, a double measurement in the overall calculation.
Sure, so at, at least 12.5% of our overall score is based on a small subset of our entire student population. So I mean, I think that's important to, to note that the, the weight of this matters. Which brings me to my second question. If you go to the slide with all the different weightings, the different pie graphs that you had, yeah, that one. So I know you explained economic development, economic needs would change the top to the, the achievement and growth, that that would shift back and forth. What is shifting the bottom two numbers? Because some of these schools, I see four of these pie graphs have the bottom two numbers are.
Yeah, they're not split even at 25.
Three of them are, yeah, three of them are shifted.
So if you have a school like Silverbrook and they have on-track to graduation where there's four categories, Silverbrook is a school that doesn't have third grade ELA or eighth grade math. So they only are being calculated for attendance and absenteeism. So that is weighted less because they only have two out of the four components in that target group area.
Okay.
So that could push that target group, that green, to be even heavier. So when you're saying 12.5%, it could be even more at schools that don't have all the components within the on-track blue area. There's so many calculations behind the scenes for all.
Well, it's interesting because, and it looks like the achievement and growth aren't mutually exclusive as far as they don't always equal 50%. So I'm seeing that some of the growth category gets shifted down into the on-track graduation category, whereas other places, it just gets shifted solely over into the achievement category.
The achievement and growth are going to combine for 50% at least.
At least, but it could be more than, obviously, it can be more than that in some of these. Okay.
Similarly, for the high school, and if I remember how I did this, the, the two pie charts at the bottom right are pictures of east and west. Same thing for that on-track to graduation. They only have three out of the four components because there's no third graders, I'm sorry, two of the components, because there's no third graders or eighth graders in their building. So that changes their bottom weighting as well.
So then presumably Silverbrook is the third one in the top row?
I think I went alphabet elementary and, yeah, there is, there is a method to my pie chart madness.
I see it, I see it now.
It should be noted that Silverbrook actually marks against the elementary schools because of the fifth grade that it has. It's not really a middle, it, there's, it, it's just one of those nuances. But I think you're drawing a point out that's important, which is, in the absence of the data, there is, there is a significant, I would say, there's a, there's a nuance or distortion there. I mean, it's not quite, they can't cover for it, they can't formulate for it, so they have to do something with it. I'm not, I'm not disparaging the calculators, I'm just saying if you don't have a whole category, then you have to do something with the whole pie.
Well, the reason why, so I, I mean, I just want to have a better grasp of how I can interpret this data and explain it to others. But also, I think it's important to note that when a lot of people see these scores, I think the assumption is, is that this is the achievements, that achievement is what I think most people associate these scores with. So when you look at Badger, for example, and it's a 57.7, and it would be easy to look at and say, well, that's almost, just barely over 50% of the students are achieving what they need to achieve, which you have the highlight there that talks about how they're actually performing above state average on their achievement section. And I think that's important to understand that the achievement is, is, you know, sometimes less than 25% of the total score. So there's a, there's just a lot of factors that go into the, into the report card. So thank you for, for helping me categorize that a little bit better in my head and delineate that. I'll have some other questions as well, but I'll, I'll let other people ask some questions.
Who else would like to ask questions? June?
I have one on the same topic of the achievement. So if you go to slide four, there is a, you were just talking about the achievement. So in reviewing these, what do you believe contributes to these high achievements? Because they're clearly above state level. You indicated we're top 20 in the state. So what, in your opinion, goes into those high achievements?
I would say, I would, I'd like to echo kind of what the elementary team presented. The teachers and the staff are always working really hard on aligning to the standards and doing what they need to do instructionally and using the curriculum that they have. What we've been really focusing on are those intentional PLCs. So they're meeting regularly and they're meeting with each other and collaborating to make sure that they're being as responsive as they can to students, whether it be in achievement in the classroom or behaviors in the classroom. And they're very collaborative and meeting regularly, asking the right questions and responding to the students to help fill skill gaps or reteach if they need to. So they're just working diligently to meet every kiddo where they are and to help them grow and achieve.
We have to do that better, though. I mean, because it takes extraordinary time. We have to do that better and we have to do it efficiently and we have to be very targeted. And so it's not that we're not doing it, it's just that can we do it more efficiently? And the answer is yes. Can we learn faster? Yes. Can we get there a little bit more assuredly? Absolutely. So I do think productive PLCs are the answer, but we're, we're in the people business. We're in, there's a, there's been a heavy lift in the last three years, I would say, post-COVID, that the, the, the world is like, okay, everything is about accountability, but at the end of the day, we still want to focus on the student experience for learning. Because if that's joyful and they succeed, the numbers will come. We want to, we want to focus on what are the skills and capabilities and supports that our teachers need and the support staff? And what do our principal leaders need to lead their schools? It is a people business and I do believe there are structures in place, systems in place right now. It will take time. But my answer to all of this is, what, what, to your question here is, it's going to be persistence and focus and seeing it through over time.
Connor?
I've said it before, you know, I, I don't see this as a big achievement. I mean, yes, we're, we're higher than some other schools, but I agree with you. I think this, we can definitely do better and there's definitely things that are in place. I think, you know, with some of the groups going, getting together and kind of working collaboratively across the district, that will help achieve some of this. But yeah, I mean, I see a D score, you know, a score of a D in a school. And, and it's, it's unfortunate that it looks like that and that we're right in the middle. And that's, that's not a bad thing. But I definitely think, I agree with Dr. Dr. Quinn about, we can do better. We're going to, you know, we need to bump these up. I like the, the 80% you know, goal that you have set here. And I, I look forward to seeing what we can do in the next.
Don't take all credit, thank you for the 80%. That is an industry standard and I wanted to explain what that standard really is. And that's why I live and die on this with our teams here, is that if, if we are able to touch that 80% proficiency for all of our students across all grade levels for every subject, especially ELA and math, but there are many other subjects. What that really indicates to me is that measurement of what is happening in the classroom. It is high-quality instruction. By far, that's significant. It's also reflects effective collaboration. You can't have high-quality instruction without effective collaboration, it doesn't exist. And lastly, strategic use of data. So when we get to that 80, that means those three factors are in play every day, the best way they can be. So I'm actually very excited to, 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 to do, to do that with this, I'm so excited, can't even talk right now. But anyhow, so it actually is a messy world. But if you really look at the 80% and you look at those three indirect measures of that, that's how we get there. High-quality instruction, effective collaboration, and effective use of data.
What percentage of schools are at that 80%?
I didn't mark that, depends on the data set that you're looking for, for sure.
If we use the overall report card score and we're using 80% as our industry standard, do you have an idea of what that might look like?
I'm going to look and find out, because that's actually something, I do know how we rank. Tina and I do know how we rank on the report card. But if we look at actual proficiencies on the state assessments at the third and eighth, it would be very, we'd, we'd have to data mine a little bit. And in my prior work, I, I used to, I used to do that. So I think I can probably do a little bit of that here.
I mean, if you just look at the, the bar graphs that you provided for the four categories, it looks like it would be less than 5% of the schools in, at least statewide. That would hit that 80%, just looking at the bar graphs.
I couldn't speculate that because it's more complicated, but I would like the challenge of kind of figuring out how that, that could be formulated.
On your growth section, can you explain to me a little bit better? What, what is that growth actually measured? So our English is 60, 60.3. What are we actually, what made that number?
Yes, this is one of those fun calculations. The state uses a calculation called value add. So basically, if the students start at a certain score, you expect them to grow this much. And then they can grow at a higher rate, that typical rate or a lower rate. All of those rates are then converted on a zero-to-six score, three being typical. And then that zero-to-six is converted to a hundred-point score to make these bar graphs. So 66 is that typical expected growth rate.
Okay.
That's probably as simple as I can make it, because it's a weird calculation.
So when you say a growth rate of 60, then it's, I mean, it's, it would be half of the students are hitting that, on average, on average, our students are hitting that three mark, that three number out of six.
Which would be the expected annual growth a student should make.
And, but on average, it'd be just a little bit below that, like 2.8 or something like that.
We're a little bit below that typical expectation and at math, we're at that typical expectation.
And again, I'm just clarifying that, so that in my head, it's, when we see a score of 60, that's still the at expectation or very close to at expectation overall. We just want to be, obviously, we're shooting for above expectations, that would be.
Yes, and again, this growth has at least four years of data behind the scenes. So they're looking at different groups and how those groups are growing year after year after year.
Does there, is there any weighting to that if students start above a certain category? So, you know, for achievement, if we have students that are, that if they start out at a higher level of achievement and then they don't grow to the same degree, but they actually still improved even further above the achievement standard, that doesn't weight that at all?
No, so your starting point is going to be different for different kiddos, but everyone is still expected to make typical growth, showing that no matter if you are below grade level or above grade level, we still expect you to be challenged or skill-filled so that you're making that annual growth expectation.
And does the growth score drop out any of the bottom quartile or the people who have, the students who have, like?
The only students not included in this would be the students that take that alternate assessment.
That's what I meant, yeah.
Yeah, other than that, the growth is fourth graders through 11th graders and how their scores change year to year.
Thank you.
June?
So I have a question about Green Tree Elementary. I was there to help celebrate, so thanks for having me, Nate. They do have the five-star rating this year, so can you give a little bit more detail on how that was achieved?
Yeah, so specifically, growth was their shining star. And while their growth in both ELA and math was high, their math growth for at least three years in a row has been almost a perfect score. So that's a true testament to how much that fourth-grade team is getting the, those third graders when they come in and how much they're growing them in that year, year after year after year. So it's a true testament. So that growth applies here in a, in a positive way for Green Tree, but that growth also is included in that target group. So again, that growth, kind of that double whammy, that double calculation really benefited them because it's a strong area for Green Tree, as well as other elementaries in Silverbrook.
Were you saying earlier that there were two checkpoints? I'm trying to remember now earlier, of, that are predictors of success in high school?
Oh, sorry, okay, I made you dizzy. So on-track to graduation, they have multiple checkpoints that are indicators of future success, two of which are academic, so third grade ELA and eighth grade math. So then that's what Dr. Trueblood examined, not from a score standpoint, but from the charts on how we're doing trend-wise in those areas. When we looked at the third grade ELA data, and bear with me while I scroll, we can see how we're performing, but we can also see where the state is at. So we're not immune to the performance change or drop. And that's part of why the legislation came through for Act 20, to do a comprehensive improvement plan for the state. So we're just along for the ride, but doing it for all the right reasons because we want our kiddos to, I guess at third grade, they make that transition from learning how to read to now reading to learn. And that milestone at third grade is, is a big indicator for future success.
So are those results are included in the district's overall scores? Or are those in the individual school score? So that makes sense.
Yeah, both, yeah. So all third graders' achievement data would be found in the achievement section of the district report card, as well as all of each elementary school. And then it's also found in this on-track. So those, those third graders, as well as this eighth grade math, would be calculated twice on the report cards and potentially a third time if some of those students are in that bottom quartile and that mini report card is calculated for them. So those indicators are behind the scenes at least three times in the report cards.
And that's, and that's helpful. And Dr. Shwet, I'm assuming that part of the reasons that when we're talking about. third grade ELA and eighth grade math is because when we look at something like this, there are many, many places we could focus and improve. And we should always improve any area that deserves improvement. But these are ones that we believe really will move the needle on this. Is that correct?
That is absolutely correct.
Okay, and I, just because what I'm afraid of is there are many ways that we could spend time and resources that could be beneficial to the students, but maybe don't change the scorecard or vice versa. This is one that we believe does both. And that's the area we should be focusing on.
Absolutely. Laser focus is needed. We are doing extraordinary things every day for our students, but they don't always translate into student performance. And we know for sure, they need a lot of things. It's all developmental. But when students meet their proficiency benchmarks, they soar and sing and they're like amazing, happy kids. So we want them to feel that too. And so I'm excited about that because laser focus is what we need to do. And I just presented you with two ways in which we are going to do that. And it will, it's not going to be easy. We will persist, we will adapt as needed. But nonetheless, I think what we, as a district, will commit to is that we don't change course and we don't lose our eye on this target.
From a timing expectation, this is not something we can snap our fingers and change overnight. So I'm going to ask a very unfair question around how, well, I'll say it this way. How can the board monitor progress on this? Because is this something that really, we only get one indicator a year and it's this scorecard? And between now and then, we maybe have indicators like some of the tests or the STAR testing, but are there ways that we can actually have some confidence that we're moving in the right direction without, so to speak, crossing our fingers and waiting one more year to find out?
It is not an unfair question, first of all. I do think in our industry, observables are very important. How teams are functioning? What systems do they use to make decisions? How are those decisions being made? Those are all observables. How can the board monitor? What I can tell you right now is it's a three-year run. Meaning if we are building our system right now and sticking with it, we should be able to see incremental improvements. We don't know how much yet, but they should be trending upward incrementally, statistically significant, but also by the third year, we should be at what I consider to be a first point of sustainability. Yep, meaning that we can trend upward and have some assurance that what we're doing is actually aligning to that third year marker. So that's how, that's how I see movement that is systemic being played out everywhere in the industry. But unless you really say, we're going to do this, this, and this, and adapt only as needed to support the work and really kind of like not do other work, not be distracted, be supportive of only that. Everybody is involved and we will hit that three-year marker wherever we are, but it'll be greater than forty-three percent.
John?
So our overall score is sixty-eight point eight. Does that relate to the potential thirty-one percent of students that would have to have an intervention of sorts?
Thank you for asking that. That is actually where the core work is. We do have in our industry, something called a multi-level system of support. And that's really just a way to talk about interventions that are highly structured, highly targeted, with a process in place, with a team around that that does its work to help our students really move through barriers in their learning. So that's what the intervention piece is. And that is actually a priority for our CNI team to say, how do we instrument that part of our business to really have effective, outcomes-based, feel-good intervention models that are in play? So that's actually, it's the classroom and then the second tier is the intervention.
But do we have, does that, is that like a representation of what we have for students in intervention? Do we have roughly thirty percent of our students in intervention?
I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question. Do we have roughly thirty percent? Tina's the data person.
I would have to run the numbers, actually. I can't think off the top of my head, but.
Would you think it's close?
At some grade levels, yes.
And if that's the case, I mean, we're talking, you know, thirty percent of our students that potentially need to be re-taught things outside of classroom times, do we have enough people to do that?
So the theory behind what you're talking about is if we reinforce and shore up our instructional lessons and our classroom experience for students, that should shrink that number. So that's where the work is in the classroom. It's not in a different place called the intervention model. But if we do those things, you start shrinking that number and increasing up to eighty. That's kind of the balancing.
Other questions? Can you help me understand how the third grade ELA score translates to the accountability report card score? So our number is forty-two point nine and our score is sixty-nine point three.
Yeah, so two totally different numbers. So don't do like an apples to apples on that. When students take a state assessment, their test results place them in one of four proficiency levels. If students get a test score in level one, the state assigns a point value to that. So if they're in level one, they get zero points that contribute to our score. If students are in level two, they get a half a point. Level three, a full point. Level four, a point and a half. So this doesn't translate exactly to the scores because of the points they assign to the test results. It'd be so much easier if I had a graphic for you.
No, I mean, I can see that it's, that there's unequal weighting here because the score dropped ten points, but the overall score only dropped two points. So clearly, there's a weighting, there's some weighting behind the scenes that we're not, that's not being shown here. So, because you would have expected the score to drop actually by twenty percent. And it clearly did not, so.
Yeah, so three out of the four levels that students can fall into are scoreable. So we do have more and more students that are scoreable in their results. So that level one is shrinking, which is good. That's what we hope to see as far as intervention models, too. If that level one is shrinking, that means that the kids are getting what they need in that universal classroom and they don't need those skill builders and those interventions. So as long as we keep that shrinking, more kids will become scoreable and then our achievement scores would increase as well.
Is there a, so students who have IEPs or 504s, they're still included in this data, correct? They're not exempt, they're not part of that other group that you had mentioned?
The, we have about one percent of our students that are in that other group that take the alternate assessment. It's about fifty kids per year that participate. All other students that participate are included regardless of their demographics.
And I know that this is a composite score for all of the third, for all of third grade, not broken out individually by, you know, by different elementary schools. But do you see any data that correlates socioeconomically or percentage of students who are in special needs, IEPs? Does that correlate with individual site scores? So if there's a school that has a higher percentage of students with socioeconomic issues or IEPs, behavior concerns, things like that, is that seem, is that correlating with these numbers? Or is that seem to be an independent marker?
Yeah, we do analyze those different demographic gaps. So how are our students with disabilities performing to our students without disabilities? And there is a gap in that achievement and growth and things like that. Every school experiences it regardless of socioeconomic status. However, there are some schools that have greater needs than others. We may have one school who is almost up to twenty percent of their kids are, have an identified disability, where another school might only have nine percent. So there are implications there on how we staff, how we serve, caseloads. But really, those students, no matter what their demographics are, they're in the classroom, getting what their peers are getting.
Sure.
So they still have that equal access to the best that we can give them regardless of their demographic.
I was looking at it more of a staffing challenge than a student
Always, I'm sure.
concern, you know, just with
Mr. Hanson here, I'm sure he'd love to talk.
Different distribution of, you know, resources. Because I know a lot of resources are distributed relatively equally amongst all of the different schools. And I'm assuming that at some point, there could be a shift for.
So with that exception, so, and Emily's certainly here too, but they look at caseload models where you're weighting caseloads. So the time that the board will talk about this is twofold. One, we'll talk about it in January when we look at targeted enrollment and potential seats that are open for open enrollment. And we'll review what all of that looks like. You'll look at it again in March, April, when we start talking about staffing plans. Because again, in their models for needs, it doesn't correlate to a number. A student can have very significant needs and require additional staffing. So that's staffed by caseload. So it is unique to the different needs that Tina's saying that we see across the sites.
Okay. Thank you for tolerating these questions. I'm just trying to get a better handle on the data and the different facts that go. I like data, so I really just want to understand, you know, where it's coming from. Because the nuance makes the difference. You know, you really have to understand what goes into the score to have the score have any weight or relevance. And if I have a hard time understanding that, you know, or us as a board who has access to all this has a hard time understanding that, then I certainly wouldn't expect all of the community members at large to just understand it, you know.
It's kind of helpful that we get all the data behind the scenes early. I mean, I know they mentioned the summer summit that we had with our leadership and our building leaders. We've been looking at this and tracking these trends and working on this for months. This is just the culmination of how do we rate with all of these different categories? To John's point, too, you know, we do always want to get better. The nice thing about the report card, since it is a rating system, every school and every district does have the ability to get five stars. So it's not like you're tied to a rank where you're never going to be able to move up or down. The work that we're doing that's intentional and improvement can get us up, level up every year. So that's something we want to continue to reach for.
Thank you very much. Thank you for answering my questions. Thank you to my fellow board members for tolerating my questions.
Good questions.
I'll just say, I've been on the board for six years, so I understand this better than you. So I appreciate your questions. I do want to put maybe one thing in context that for a parent looking at, listening and seeing a Slinger or Germantown, like ten points above, I'm going to send my kid to Slinger because they're scoring way better. If they have that one data point, just explore more is my question to the parent. We have some of the best AP classes if you want to college-ready your kid in high school. Our high school's got a bad score, but I know the high schools are producing wonderful students. If you're going into CTE education, we're second to none with seven full-time career and technical education teachers. So we're educating kids that are making them career-ready. And I don't think none of that is showing up on the scoreboard other than we have three hundred and ten kids taking AP class and it's not a high enough percentage. Because we have, if you go to our CTE program, we have an overabundance of people participating in culinary arts, auto shop, CAD and CAM design. So I'm just passionate about that. So I just had to put that in context for our scores. But I do, I'll be your cheerleader to everyone. We have to figure out how to score better.
We can have all that and score better.
And have all that and score better for all our students, so. I'll get off my soapbox.
Well, and thank you for your presentation. I, the data is deceptively not straightforward. And so thank you for appealing through it. And I don't mean that as an excuse. I mean, clearly, there are learnings and opportunities here. And what I do appreciate is, as I had said before, we're picking areas that will benefit our students and benefit our score at the same time. That's a good, that's a really, really good overlap. I'd also challenge us, and I appreciate June asking about, well, the ones that scored five stars or four stars, what are opportunities for us to replicate that? So I'm hopeful that you'll be looking at that as well. And then, as I had mentioned before, and I know this is tough, but ways to keep us surprised so that we have an understanding, are we on track, Dr. Trueblood, as to what you're thinking? And because we know it takes time. So I leave you with that challenge because I know that's not an easy one to answer immediately.
I realize I wasn't very clear on your answer. I would leap at every opportunity to tell you how we're doing because that's how, whatever you measure, it gets done. It's how that works in life. So I would welcome the opportunity to come before you on behalf of the district to report out where we are because that just keeps us on our toes and we're all in it together. So thank you.
Great, thank you. Other thoughts, comments? Appreciate your presentation and your work. Thank you very much. All right, after the school accountability report, next agenda item is the policy committee report. And I believe that's me. So the policy committee met on November fourteenth and worked on several policies that, I don't want to steal the thunder of what's already on the agenda, but we are taking a little bit of a different approach on those policies. Normally, we bring the policies back for a first reading. These are policies we'd really like board input on before we finalize that first draft. So this isn't a first reading. So there'll be two related to nepotism, there'll be one related to the complaint policy. And when we get to that point, Superintendent Wimmer will walk us through, but we're really looking for initial board feedback. So this is not even a first reading, but that was the primary work. So look forward to that. Any questions? And we have an agenda item upcoming, but any questions for me in the meantime? All right, we'll move then into the superintendent's report. Superintendent Wimmer?
Sure, I'll lead with some recognition. The Wisconsin Soccer Coaches Association named West Senior Franklin Confira and West Junior Teddy Danaher to the all-state team. West Junior volleyball player Kaylee Attendorf was named honorable mention on the Wisconsin Volleyball Coaches Association All-State Division One team. So congratulations to those students and thank you for your representation of West Bend at the state level. Don't forget the Fall Play is this coming weekend. It's a series of one acts. Will be presented Thursday, the thirtieth, at seven PM. Another seven PM showing on Friday and Saturday, December second, at one thirty. Tickets are available on GoFan. See the link in our newsletter, the high school bookkeeping office. So make sure you take in and celebrate our students in the Fall Play. And one week from tonight, the West Bend East and West seniors and their parents and guardians are invited to attend the annual scholarship kickoff night in the Silver Lining Arts Center at seven PM, Monday, December fourth, at the high schools. Reminder that our local scholarship organization, Columns, will be represented at the event as well as our scholarship coordinator, Amy Barnes. So the event provides an overview to parents, students, families about local scholarship process, how to navigate that. We encourage everyone to attend to learn more about the more than nine hundred thousand dollars in just local scholarships that's supported through the college organizations. And that's available for four-year, two-year colleges, universities, and technical schools. So regardless of your path, there's opportunities for our students. We encourage you to stop in at our College Career Center and attend that evening. Speaking of Columns, one of their largest fundraisers is Tuesday, December fifth, when the Columns organization sponsors the Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra Holiday Pops Concert. Again, at the Silver Lining Arts Center at the high school's campus. That's a seven thirty PM show. Tickets are thirty dollars each, again benefiting our students directly through scholarships. They're available at Jeff Spirits on Main, Sendix, by calling Pick Heaters, Horicon Bank. Connect with us at the district office if you need any help securing your tickets. Again, that's Milwaukee Symphony Orchestra Holiday Pops Concert, seven thirty PM, December fifth. Thank you to our Student Services Department. We'll highlight this in our district newsletter tomorrow, but they're holding a series of free seminars for families on mental health. The first event is Wednesday, December thirteenth, and it's on understanding the impact of mental health on families. So the event begins at five PM here at the Education Service Center. It's the first in a series of seminars. In this one, a family will share their struggles, celebrations, and lessons learned along the way in supporting their son who is living with a mental health challenge. And a panel will discuss community resources that are available for individuals and families. So again, look for not only attending that, but we'll highlight in our district news on Wednesday the dates. Save the dates for the entire series. So again, thank you to our Student Services team. You can go to our website, district newsletter will have links to register. And again, those additional events will be held January, February, and March, highlighting mental health. So thank you to them. A reminder to our community that the high school student council-led blood drive is Thursday, December fourteenth. It's in the south gym of the high school from six thirty AM to twelve thirty PM. Our high school students plan this giant event with a big goal of three hundred pints of blood. It's open to community members, qualifying students, the entire West Bend School District staff, as well as parents and guardians. You can register online using the Versity portal. That will again be in our newsletter, on our website, or. on our website, or give us a shout if you need help navigating that. So some really amazing events led by our students coming up, and I would encourage people to participate in any way that they can. So that's all I have.
Great, thank you. Any questions for Superintendent Wimmer? All right. Hearing none, we have several discussion items. First is out-of-state travel, high school band, 2025. And Dr. Trueblood, it sounds like you are kicking this one off, yes?
Yes, I'm back. So I have the pleasure of introducing you to our band directors Cory Murphy and Leah Duckert, and they would, they're here to request or to propose to you the trip that is quite exciting to me, which is the marching band in New Orleans in 2025. So that's coming up faster than we think, so they're going to take it away.
Thank you. Welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Figured it was a good time to do this since it's 18 degrees out today.
Good call.
This is my 10th year in the district. I just want to introduce myself because I've, I've been working here for a while, and this is my first time in front of the board, but Cory Murphy, one of the two band directors at the high school, and also lucky enough to work with the Badger kids in the morning. And I just want to say, we have the most amazing, talented, motivated, and enthusiastic kids in the music programs here, and I'm very lucky and thankful to work with them. All right. Okay, so we're here to propose our New Orleans trip. And this, this will be my second trip going with the, the bands, and I would have to say, fantastic experience all throughout the week we spent in Greece in 2017. Travel is a transformative experience. A New Orleans tour will not only allow our students to broaden their worldview in a very unique, yet domestic setting, but also allow them to share a bit of ourselves through our musical performances. So when we get off the plane in New Orleans, we'll have a tour guide that meets us and stays with us the entirety of the trip. So it's really comfortable, it's really familiar to the students to have that, that face throughout, you know, the week of travel and seeing different places, eating at different restaurants. So for students who are experienced travelers, this will provide a thorough look at the unique and vibrant culture in New Orleans, including historical perspectives and local cuisine and more. But those that are new to travel, I think they'll feel at home with their band and with their tour guide. So we're looking at a six-day, five-night tour to New Orleans over spring break 2025, which our tentative dates are March 23rd to 28th, but that is pending the school year approval of the new calendar. This includes a couple of, a couple of performances, excuse me, two public performances where the students will parade in the streets in New Orleans, with the permit, of course, and one clinic at Loyola University. There's a couple of stops for sightseeing and lots of education beyond the performances, including Preservation Hall, Mardi Gras World, Jazz Museum, and View Orleans. So I'm just going to show a few highlights, the itinerary is linked in, the proposal. So View Orleans is our first stop, and that is basically a great first stop because it's kind of an introduction to New Orleans and what it has to offer, including a 360-degree outdoor observation deck of the city, so students can kind of get a layout of the land when we first arrive. Preservation Hall is one of the, the nation's most famous jazz halls of all time and features one of the most famous jazz bands, and, and we'd be spending some time there for a seminar. As you can see, it's a rather small location, people are seated on the floor in the picture. We're not going over Mardi Gras, however, we'd be remiss to miss out any of the Mardi Gras culture. And so Mardi Gras World is basically a museum, but it's a, it's a large warehouse where the floats are constructed, and so part of the plan would be to construct Mardi Gras masks at the Mardi Gras World. We'd also visit the New Orleans Jazz Museum, which is housed in a former US mint, and I'm looking forward to this one especially. You can see there's a, there's a trumpet in the picture and it says Louis Armstrong. It's blurred out, but this was one of Louis Armstrong's trumpets, so it's the type of thing you'd see at the Jazz Museum. And then, one of the cool things about these trips is they always plan meals that feature local cuisine. And so the, the dinners are provided for the students, the, the lunches are on their own, but the dinners are basically provided so that the students get exposed to those local cuisines. They can try gumbo and jambalaya. So one of the, the meal stops is Mississippi River Boat and Dinner Cruise, which I think would be a blast. And I mentioned the two performances on historic streets in New Orleans. So the cost of the trip, there's two options here, but the one that's posted for the students is the quad. We'd be putting our students in the quads, we, we think it's safer to keep them in groups while, while they're not only around the area, but also staying together to kind of look over each other. So the single cost is, is more for our chaperones. Okay, so the quad pricing is $2,450, and that's based on 70 full-paying students. There's a registration, excuse me, registration link through the slides here, but also through the trip proposal that makes it pretty easy to get signed up for the trip. And then also you can see below that additional costs, the standard or cancel for any reason are the travel insurance plans that are offered to the students then when they sign up for the trip. So I mentioned this earlier, great thing about the trip, nearly everything is included with the exception of lunches and souvenirs. That's dinner, breakfast, travel, hotel, all of the admission deal, all, all of the events as well. Also, any COVID travel requirements such as testing, masks, and hand sanitizer, et cetera, I don't foresee any of that being an issue. However, if that is something that the students need to bring, they need to provide their Now, the cost is something that the students can fundraise for through our program. We have annual fundraisers in the fall. We're currently running Cream City Soap and Collectivo Coffee fundraisers, and in the spring we'll have even more to offer. And all of that money basically gets deposited into a student escrow account for travel, which they can then put forward to pay for their trip cost. There's also a scholarship program, and this is brand new this year, the Rhodes Scholarship Program, basically designed to provide funds for students who are in need of those funds. And those are determined by a, a number of factors. So there's five categories listed on the bottom, achievement, need, initiative, and involvement, service and citizenship, and connection. And so if the student is basically referred by their, their teachers for this, they can apply for this scholarship program to cover parts of their trip cost. That's it. Quick and dirty. Any questions?
Questions, Chad?
Just a question on, on how the cost works for that. So the fundraisers, they do fundraisers as a, as a group or as a, a campaign, and then all that money gets pulled in, and then you, if it's not enough to cover the full cost of the trip, then that remainder gets divided equally amongst all the students, or?
Individual fundraisers. So the students would individually sell, and all the money that they raise goes into their account, and then yes, yeah, whatever they don't cover, then they'll pay.
Okay, thank you. Other questions?
I just have a question or comment, maybe. I think it sounds like a really cool trip. My only question is, spring break in New Orleans sounds, I mean, New Orleans can be a pretty wild place, I think, and so how are we going to guarantee that kids aren't going to be, you know, I know like the French Quarter, that's like a big party destination, so I guess I just worry about what they might be exposed to in New Orleans on spring break.
That's a good question. What, one of the reasons we specifically are avoiding Mardi Gras.
Yeah.
But I, I will say that the travel company we work with, Marquee Discoveries, has lots of experience working with school groups, so that's very much in the forefront of their mind. Like I said, the, the tour guide that we work with when we get off of the plane is with us the entire time. So there might be moments where the kids break off in, in groups to go and find lunch or to shop for souvenirs, but we're largely in a large group going through all of these stops.
And I think too, it's our spring break, which is generally the last week in March, not kind of the more national spring break. Yeah, it does not align.
Not to mention chaperones too, we will have six chaperones on the trip. Yeah.
Good question. Other questions? Sounds like a great opportunity. So this is a discussion item, so we will bring this back on the next agenda for action. We appreciate you bringing the, bringing this item to us. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. All right. So our next discussion item is the summer school calendar.
Yeah, speaking of calendars.
Here we go.
We just, again, not an action item, but we just wanted to get consensus to proceed. We'd like to start pushing out summer school program dates. One nuance that hadn't been integrated into the calendars before, we're accustomed to having July 4th fall within that, we take that out for observation, but Juneteenth has also been recognized as a federal holiday. It's just kind of different in the state, it's more seen like a president's day as far as total closure of things or civil workers being off. We would propose, we didn't have any impact last year, but we just failed to kind of put that into the calendar and discuss it, so I wanted to make sure and bring it here in the board that Juneteenth does fall in the proposed dates. To accommodate any families, we would recognize if they wanted to take off from that day, and only for our high school students would they need to make up that time, we'd offer some makeup, which we do normally because absences sometimes occur during summer school. So we'd like to proceed with that, and then just call out, there's just a slight shift. Instead of doing multiple split sessions, we'd concentrate our 4K through seventh grade, June 17th through July 11th. Our high school, because of the credit recovery aspect and to meet the necessary minutes of instruction, that would be Monday, June 10th through Friday, July 19th, again with makeups available because those minutes are calculated, and then certainly high school virtual options. So we would like to proceed with the, the placement of those aligns with our capital improvement projects, our building projects over the summer, so the sites are good, the sessions are sound, meet the required minutes where necessary. I just wanted to call out that, like I said, that one federal holiday we'd be taking off and the one we would recognize and allow parents to excuse if needed. So any questions or discussion?
Any input, any concerns? This is a discussion item, this will come back also for action, but in the meantime...
We, we don't need to bring this one through action, we just wanted support for building this calendar. So with that board support, we're going to publish dates and keep moving. So you'll see summer school come back kind of as a post-summer school item, or Aaron Faust will, like, how is it progressing once enrollment registrations opened, you know, how many do we see in the program, that kind of thing. I know that they're going to be doing a little bit of more feedback, so they're still developing some pieces, so we'll continue to update you around like the jumpstarts and, you know, my friends who are here for band, orchestra, picking up instruments for the first time, how they structure those. So they've been doing some feedback with students and families, and then they'll tailor that as well. So we will proceed with locations, dates, and making sure we recognize Juneteenth and alert families to that opportunity should they seek to recognize that holiday by taking off and participating in other activities.
Okay. Just to clarify, we don't need to take action on this, this is more for input.
Yep. Just wanted to make sure I had consensus to proceeds, which I, I am clearly receiving, so we will proceed with that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. After the summer school calendar, our next item is policy discussion. I had hinted at this a bit in the policy committee update, but Superintendent Wimmer, I think you offered to kind of facilitate this discussion item.
Well, it's been a long time. So I get the history on nepotism, because it's certainly come before the board, this board and others before you. So kind of the why it's coming back and, and what pieces our team is seeking some feedback on before we bring you a formal first reading. So there's no action, there's no anything, but we started reviewing this way back in April of 2022. So at the time, we were looking at further legal review, we were looking at consultation with WASB, our own district council, looking at past practice, all of those pieces. So we brought it back January 2023, and we advanced for readings by the full board. So we had just some nuances, some clarifications. Certainly, this does not preclude us, you know, West Bend's a really tight, generationally connected community, so we absolutely have relatives who, who work here. So kind of one of the things around nepotism was, well, this doesn't mean we can't hire, it just means you can't be involved in hiring decisions, termination decisions, or direct impact around someone's wage. You don't directly supervise your relatives, so getting clarity on that. Then we wanted to go back to more our foundational language versus new language. So the committee started working on that piece, it was advanced for both first and second readings in March of 2023. But at April, when we brought it forward for a reading in action, there were again some just nuances of questions, so we tabled that. We were about to turn over three new members on our board, we didn't want to inherit something, and so we just kind of paused that and it went back to committee. This summer, our committee spent oh, well over an hour going line by line, taking up almost individual words and definitions centered around nepotism. And the largest piece was that we separated nepotism by, one, going back to our original language as a foundation, we separated board from staff and employee, and then you've got some green new language regarding immediate family members. So we had lots of conversation around lineal descendants, lateral descendants, my favorite line of lines of continuity, which we learned terms, but, so we're focusing around defining who those family members were. And those were kind of things that we were all in agreement on and looking at, we wanted to have some conversation tonight around the language around immediate family members. We also wanted full board input on the concept of influence, because the policy and language, from a committee perspective, we're trying to avoid the illusion of influence because there's that kind of relationship. And in the policy for the board specifically, you can still participate in discussions, you just don't take action on the policy itself. So people would recuse themselves from the policy itself on nepotism. And then we also had conversations around the language of domestic versus designated partners, and then just, again, discussions around the law superseding those pieces. So before we formalized a, a first draft, we want to make sure that there was clarity for the full board, no outstanding questions, and then we can kind of revisit some of the topics. So I would invite any of the policy committee members, John, Chris, Chad, to kind of talk about its evolution and, you know, our readiness to bring this forward to you tonight for your kind of final input before we, we bring that language back for a formalized first reading. So I open the floor to the board.
So just as a background item, so one of the things, and you mentioned this Superintendent Wimmer, is splitting the nepotism policy. The thought was, we have a section of our, in our policies that are designated to board, and there's a different section essentially dedicated to personnel, and the idea was having it as a combined policy, although all the words were there and it was fine. You wouldn't necessarily look for the board nepotism policy in the employee section, nor would you look for the employee nepotism policy in the board section, hence one of the reasons why we divided it, so.
And speaking about the employee, we wanted to add a line to that policy that commits ourselves to putting it in the employee handbook as well as policy, because that's where our employees are going to go, read, and sign off on things, so we would be adding that line, committing ourselves to, to do that. And also too, we found that we could strike through the language in the employee around time of adoption. When it was originally written, there were people that maybe fell into this, and there's, there's no impact, so we, we don't need that line anymore. It, it doesn't impact any current staff. So that kind of summarizes all those key points, but really, we were sending around that concept of influence. Does it, you know, provide what we're looking for as well as that whole family members, those pieces? But again, just to be really clear, we can still hire people who might be related to each other, it's just those practices around them participating in the hiring, termination, or compensation.
So ultimately, this will, whatever input we have would go back to the policy committee to tune up, and then we'd come back for a first reading, and I...
Correct.
I just say that because, first of all, if anyone has input between now and then, we would welcome it. Second is, if you come up with something later, there's going to be another opportunity to come back, but it's good to get this initial feedback before we put a draft in, a fi- a final preliminary draft in place.
Same. Our committee was just really committed to making sure, you know, we know that we're three people and we don't represent the full board, and this was certainly that the whole board was engaged in. So that was really important for the committee. Our next meeting's January 9th, so any feedback that you're providing tonight or in the future would be brought to our committee to refine those.
So pause, see if there's any initial comments or questions, June?
I have one question about how it pertains to the consent agenda, because sometimes there's information in there, a contract, so I am, if I see someone who I am related to in the consent agenda or a contract, I would just abstain myself from that entire vote, correct?
Yeah, there, go ahead.
Procedurally, sure, you can do that if we knew that. So let's say we're, let's say eventually, you know, you have a child who becomes a teacher and, and that person gets hired or something of, of that nature. hired, or something of that nature. You can also set aside that item out of the consent agenda procedurally, so that you're still participating in all the other pieces that you could, but you recuse yourself from that one individual item on contract. So, we would be working with our board members to know or understand that. And again, procedurally, we could handle it, handle it that way, and just set aside those individual items, and keep it as narrow as possible, so that you, as board members, are fulfilling all your roles, duties, and just narrowing where any conflict might exist. Good question.
Any other input to the policy committee on this? One, as I'd said before, certainly, if anyone takes a look at it, comes up with a follow-up question or an observation-
Let us know.
Pass it to any of us, and we'll advance it to the policy committee. Go ahead.
Just make one.
Sure.
I just think it's still too broad. Stepchild, sibling, I mean, and the other policy that you can't manage anybody. To me, we're a public school district that lives in a, yes, I'd say it's a small, middle-town size, that has great teachers, that are siblings, and daughters, and sons. And I hate to put a, that they would go somewhere else to teach when they're great teachers, and because they would feel handcuffed by where they could move in the district, because they have three relatives that work in the district. And I just think it's too broad. That's just-
Sure. No, and I think that's something for us to, I appreciate that feedback, and something that the policy committee can think about a bit.
I mean, call it happen, in fact.
Yeah. And it is that distinction between, well, they can work together, it's just one can't supervise the other. That's really what they're focused on. But I understand your point, that eventually, well, maybe I'm looking for advancement, and now, is it curtailing?
I gotta think, okay, I got something.
Yeah. And maybe that's a dimension that we can look at, if ultimately, wow, this would restrict the ability for folks to advance to the point where it's going to curtail their ability for advancement. That's an interesting dimension.
I mean, one option for the one that you're describing there, you could put something in there about, you know, unless granted board exception or board approval, or something like that. So, if it were a scenario like that, where someone's nephew happened to be in the English department, and someone has an opportunity to lead the English department, or something like that, you could get board approval, you know, or something like that. I don't know. I mean-
But there is state statutes, and we can't supersede that with ours.
Yeah, but I think what Kurt's saying is that this would, this would be probably outside of the state statute, as far as, like, you know, if you're not necessarily in charge, I would say, other than maybe like a performance review, like an individual performance review that was tied to compensation, then I would agree. I think then, you're just kind of stuck, because you probably can't have a direct impact in compensation. But if you just happen to be leading a department decisionally, you know, just like, hey, this is the direction our department wants to go, you know, I mean, it would be, I think that probably, I don't think the statute applies necessarily to that.
There's also, in what you're describing, so I think this is really good that you bring up these examples. So, there is no positional authority there. So, let's say, the example was, the elementary principals talked about building leadership teams. There is no positional authority. You could have a set of spouses at the high school, one's sitting on the leadership team, one's not. The other isn't, one isn't the boss of the other. So, there's no positional authority. In addition to, as we said, and as John's saying, around hiring, termination, compensation, but there's also no positional authority. The only time that would really come in, that you couldn't defer, if I looked at the org chart, we're actually large enough where this isn't a problem necessarily, because within each department structure, there's multiple supervisors. Let's say, in Emily's department, her and Jill Corbett are both administrators. Heather and Quinn are both administrators. Andy, Tim, they work as administrators. So, even if you had a really narrow lane and got to the top of the organization, we would defer across departments to who could supervise. It just means we don't evaluate that person. To Kurt's credit and fear is, we want to make sure that if they're the best person, and they happen to be related, they're still the best person. So, maybe more clearly defining that, or having some supplementary assurance around, you can still hire the best people. We just have to map out, because there's the disclosure piece around hiring, you know, what is that, or it's yours, map that out, so that we attend to it in the system.
I think Kurt asked a great question, and I think it's something that we can evaluate as a committee with administration's help around, would that be a problem? If so, you know-
Yeah.
What are our options? And if not, that's fine, too. Okay.
Good.
Good point.
Yeah, I'll just add, I know there's, I believe there's also a statute on the Code of Ethics for teachers also. So, there are multiple checkpoints that do touch, you know, a lot of this. So, I mean, I definitely think it's worth a conversation, chat about this, and figure out what else we can come up with, if there's concerns. But I also don't want to, I also don't want to leave open, you know, an opportunity for someone to get into a situation that's, you know, not comfortable for the district, or them, or, you know, anybody else. So...
I agree. You don't want to have any, anything viewed as unethical, which I think is the main, the main theory of the entire policy, is just to make sure that we're maintaining integrity around how we're treating subordinates or coworkers.
Kurt, thanks for the suggestion, and appreciate the input.
And then, following suit, we started unpacking public complaints policy. You have a sample in there around that. Again, looking for some board feedback. We, too, wanted to separate the process and put a piece around board complaints. If there was a complaint about a board member, in a 100 series, instead of having it kind of all together. There were some pieces about updated language that we liked, and some pieces that we liked about ours was our timeline, and really mapping out our process. We wanted to be really more clear around how to report a complaint, and then, mapping out what the resolution process looks like, kind of for both camps. But we wanted to then separate and put a complaint for board members, put that in the 100 series. And we wanted to revisit and integrate language regarding our expected conduct as board members. Like, here's our expectations, and if there's a complaint about our service as a board member, you know, how would we navigate that, and what would that look like, and make sure that, again, that they were kind of step and step around, you know, receiving and resolving complaints. But they separated that avenue. So, those were our initial thoughts, as we unpacked that as a committee. And again, recognizing that all of our board members serve collectively, and you serve when you're sitting at this table, but you also have individual lives. So, we really wanted to put it in the context of a board member, board service, and what those expectations were. So, those were our initial pieces. Again, wanted to bring that forward to the board for your initial reactions and follow-up. Our committee meets again January 9th, and we would expect to be digging into some of the feedback I've already shared that we went through, but then developing a first draft for the board to see at a first reading. Any initial thoughts?
June?
Okay. So, I see, so what I think I hear you saying is that we'll keep the 870 policy, but then create another policy with a 100 series? Okay.
Yes, correct. That we would, we would kind of have them mirror each other as far as receiving, but we want one for board members, specific to board members. So, I didn't draft anything. This was our initial conversation as a committee. We wanted to get feedback from the board, because it's a pretty new path for us. So, that would be our recommendation as a committee, but we're just eager for your thoughts.
And I think, June, that summarizes it really, really well. You know, what we noticed is, there were many similarities in the receiving portion. But how a complaint is addressed with an elected school board official versus an employee of the district are sufficiently different after that, where we thought, you know, maybe it makes sense to split them. We weighed that against the convenience of, well, maybe there's just one policy that someone can look at for any kind of complaint. But it made it so long, they thought, you know, we also want to give people actually a chance of being able to read through and find what they need. So, that was the initial thought. But again, this will come back for additional discussion. So, it was kind of the logic, if I remember, behind what we were proposing originally. Any initial, other initial thoughts or comments? These two will come back for a first reading.
We will, again, take in feedback that we heard tonight, as well as anything that you send any one of us for consideration at our next committee meeting. And then, we would anticipate, again, those drafts for first readings to come forward following that. Thank you.
Thanks. We're in for the input. Kurt?
You could put a watermark across, saying, behave.
That covers so much, doesn't it, Kurt? That covers so much. All right. And thanks, Superintendent Wimmer, for walking us through that discussion. So, we now move to action items. And I will ask, does administration have any update on either of these action items that we heard about before?
No, both were previously heard as discussion. There was no follow-up clarification needed. One for debate, one for German. Again, they've participated in out-of-state for this type of thing before. So, no.
So, why don't we start with the out-of-state travel for debate? Are there any questions for the administration on this? Hearing none, I would move to approve the out-of-state travel for the debate team as presented. Is there a second? John, thank you. Motion and second to approve out-of-state travel debate as presented. Any final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Any oppose? Thank you. That motion carries. Similarly, for out-of-state travel, German class, I make a motion to approve the out-of-state travel for German class as presented. Is there a second? Thank you, Melanie. Motion and second to approve out-of-state travel for the German class as presented. Final discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? Thank you. That motion carries. We move then to future agenda items and our board meeting calendar. So, this really covers us through December, and I'll say mid-January. So, all the meetings I'm about to mention are scheduled to take place at the Education Service Center. So, we have regular board meetings scheduled for December 5 and January 8 at 5:30 PM. We have a school board work session on December 11, and also at 5:30 PM here at the Education Service Center. Superintendent Wimmer, just to pause for a second. So, what we're going to do there is, December 5 will be what we might consider to be a normal or typical board meeting.
Procedural.
And statute requires that we have at least one meeting a month, so that will satisfy that. So, then, on the 11th, that's going to be more of a work session. So, we're not going to take any action items. We're going to dedicate that time to the facilities report presentation.
Correct. And the work session format will have a little bit different setup for the board. Again, remember, you'll be engaged with EUA, Fendorf, ourselves, and receiving that report. We did a little foundational knowledge last time, just a little bit less formal, so that you can kind of seek to understand as they present the findings and the facilities report, ask questions, get clarification, without being bound by some of the Robert's rules, a little bit less formal interaction with that team. So, again, that's exactly why we were seeking the original date. We couldn't get all board members in one spot, so we secured the date we already had on the calendar, hence the shift to a December 5 to take care of the procedural piece. So, thank you.
Sure. All right. So, those items relate to the board meetings. And then, December 19th, curriculum committee meeting at 4:30 PM, and then, policy committee meeting scheduled for January 9th at the Education Service Center here, 4 PM. Let's see. And then, oh, yes, I'm taking these all out of order. January 8 would be then our next, first, I should say, school board meeting, regular school board meeting of 2024. All right. So, now that I've confused everybody by skipping all around, the next item then would be that December 5 regular board meeting. And encourage members of the public to take a look at our official meeting postings, as the time and time, or date, or location may change. That's what we have for the board calendar. Any questions on that? Any other items then for follow-up and communication? Hearing none, we've reached the end of our planned agenda. And so, since we have no other scheduled business, I would move to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Kurt. We have a motion, second to adjourn the meeting. Any final discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any oppose? All right. That motion carries. Thank to everyone who presented and who's in attendance. We appreciate it, and we'll see you next time. Thank you.